On the clock, I'd like to call a meeting in order. Ms. T, would you call the roll, please?
Hal Glanville, JR Haddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Travis Orbach.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Gary Telkamp.
Here.
Linda Varvel.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remember, counsel, if you have a conflict of interest, please let everyone else know before you vote. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the November 18th council meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the November 18th council meeting.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the bills in between?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in between for $104,458.63.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And can I get a motion to approve the current claims?
Make a motion to approve current claims for $494,859.06.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And can I get a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims?
Make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims, $4,081.41.
Second.
Linda.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Do we have any communications from the public? Anybody who'd like to address the council tonight? All right, we'll move on to our council updates. The first council update is Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce Executive Director Josh.
Good evening, council. How are we doing tonight? All these people here must be here to listen to my briefing, so this is kind of exciting.
Only the hardy ones showed up tonight.
It is a little chilly. Real quick here, we'll run through a few things, but our storefront pageant completed, or finished up the end of October. I'd like to again personally extend my gratitude for you guys allowing or contributing $2,000 to that project. All in all, I think between your donation and what the chamber put out, we put out like $4,600 in money to the businesses. We had at least 10 businesses make physical improvements to their exterior of their buildings. And I think if you look around town, you saw some really nice things happening. Our merchant trick or treat was held on Halloween. We had 45 businesses participating this year downtown, which was a record for us. Coming up here, we have our cookie cruise this Friday from 4:00 to 6:00 downtown. We currently have 15 merchants signed up for cookies, so get on the street, start walking up and down those nice sidewalks and sample them all. And then we've got our window decorating contest going on as well. We've got 18 businesses signed up for that. I think most importantly, you're going to notice that we have a lot of business involvement right now, a lot of enthusiasm with our businesses, and we're thankful for that, and we'll try to keep building on that. Earlier this fall, we had a couple events come into Hot Springs that were really beneficial, I think, for the community. One was the Girls Getaway Weekend, and the other was the Dance Network of South Dakota Convention. Now, neither one of these were chamber events, but as a chamber, we did work closely with the organizers of these events. And I know for the Girls Getaway Weekend, one of our retailers expressed that that was her best day at her shop ever since she's been open that weekend. So that getaway weekend, they actually worked with us, bought chamber bucks, gave them out to the people that were coming to that weekend event, and it was really great. The dance competition was organized by Abby with the dance studio right here in town. Brought 50 girls or 50 participants and then a parent as well for the weekend, so it was really a nice event. We also had a couple meetings. We had U.S. Representative Dusty Johnson here in October. They reached out to the chamber wanting to set up a roundtable discussion with about five to eight businesses, so we coordinated that. And then we also had a workforce development discussion at the Hot Springs Public Schools, looking at some of their scholarship programs with Build Dakota, and just trying to find ways to take some of these really smart young people here in town and hook them up with a business sponsor, and then have them come back and work in town for three years afterwards. Pretty exciting program, and I know the chamber is excited to continue working on that with Dr. Combo up at the school. Finally, we've got, we did commit as a board and the chamber for our summer concert series, which will be a total of six concerts in June, July, and August down in Centennial Park. So we're working on securing sponsorships for that and securing the talent to show up and perform for us. Those will be Saturday concerts somewhere in the evening. And then we're also going ahead with our Salute to Valor Festival, which will be Memorial Day weekend, looking to kind of showcase down, or showcase the entire town, actually, with road construction down. Shouldn't have any more orange cones around anywhere. Should be a great weekend. And if you look in the hills, there's not many events going on Memorial Day weekend, so I thought it might be a great way to get a little jumpstart on the tourist season. Finally, we were able to put about $5,000 into our 25 budget for banners, to help put banners on the new light poles, the 52 light poles that can hang a banner throughout downtown. I would ask for City Hall, or the City Council, or somebody to provide a little guidance in that. I know there's at least three different organizations that are working towards that end, and kind of having a framework of how we operate inside of this goal of having those things, having banners on those poles, I think would be helpful as we try to figure out the best way to do this. But the chamber does have money for that, and I guess we'd love to be a part of that discussion when time comes. Other than that, I'm looking great, looking forward to a fantastic 2025. Do you all have any questions for me at this moment?
Hi, Josh. Is there a recap or a synopsis of what Representative Johnson spoke with, or what he talked about with the businesses?
Yeah, so when we put that together, the best recap I saw was actually in the paper.
Okay.
We did have a reporter. I talked to, coordinated with Brett. Because it was a political party, we didn't publish it until after the election.
So I can go back to the newspaper and find?
Yeah, absolutely. The general synopsis was there's a lot of concerns about housing and daycare. Those were kind of the two biggest things that were brought up by businesses that were there. We did have an ag producer there that had some concerns on 840 ear tags and different things like that that just got passed, but I thought it was a good discussion. It's the first time I've been in a discussion with Representative Johnson, and he took a series of detailed notes. I'd be interested to follow up with the participants to see if he did get back to them and kind of work towards solving some of their problems for them.
Thank you.
Yep.
Josh, on your banner program that you're going to have coming up, when do you anticipate starting that or bringing that into interview?
Well, we definitely want it up by the, you know, first part of May, I would think, at the latest. I personally have some thoughts on it. I know Light Up Our, what is it, Light Up Our Town or Light Up Our Downtown, they're hoping to have some sort of holiday banners that run from November through March. And I know the school likes to put their graduates up on those banners in June, I think. For me personally, I think there's kind of three things that I was looking to try and target. One was being a Veterans Town. Two, the soak-in motto that the chamber has taken on. And then three would be some banners kind of denoting the historic district downtown. To me, if we can find some sort of, and maybe they're different banners. In my mind, they're different banners throughout the course of town. You kind of have three different sections, and maybe we could use them all just in different parts of the town to kind of give it all covered versus buying three separate banners.
I don't know if I'd spoken with you about my ideas for us having, we are a Veterans Town.
Yep.
We are a Purple Heart community, and we've seen in Rapid City and other towns a banner of a veteran showing the picture of the veteran, what service they were in the years they were in. So I've been running with that idea. I've spoken with the American Legion, and they're behind me as well.
Yep.
I don't remember if I talked to you after you first got in.
No, we haven't.
That those are some ideas that I was trying to implement so we could highlight our Veterans Town, if you will.
Absolutely, and I think that's a great idea. And that kind of goes to my point. There's a lot of different groups that are kind of working on the same project here. And if we could coordinate between all of us, I think we could probably save some money and not duplicate efforts. I will tell you also that my dad's a veteran. It's something near and dear to my heart, and we're also looking at a Veterans Day activity during 2025. I don't know what that's going to look like exactly yet, but I've got some ideas on that. I know my dad's just tickled to go get a free haircut and a free meal at Applebee's. We don't have an Applebee's, but you know, chamber could maybe float a free sundae or something like that. It wouldn't be that hard, so it'd be fun to do something coming up in November.
Josh, going along the lines of what JR's talking about, the mayor and I talked quite a few years ago, also having flags flown on Veterans Day. But the ideal that I had for dad, and maybe there's something that you could sneak in there too, was to have, since we have a lot of veterans in this town, and they have their flags from their family members that have passed, maybe they could fly their flags for Veterans Day, post the colors in the morning, and then after the day's done at 5:00, take it down. Something that could also be incorporated into that if you're...
Absolutely, yeah. I think that'd be great. And I really like our new polls with the, you know, and I think maybe the old ones had that too, but we can hang a banner and a flag at the same time, which I think is going to be really nice. And we had flags go up already, so I'm assuming those are in the city's possession somewhere?
Yeah, the street department manages those.
Okay.
I have two points. Number one, we have had banners for soaking hot springs, and I don't know where they're tucked away or if they would even fit.
They're the wrong size.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the other thing is I don't know if Olivia updated you or gave you any inkling that we had spoken to her, the chamber, with the new Wayfinding signage that will be going up in town. We plan on three kiosks that we've asked assistance from the chamber to get. And on one side is a city map that one of the media people, Zoe, that worked here previously, worked very hard on, so that she can easily change out when businesses move or change, so you don't have to redo the whole map. But each building has its own thing that you can change on the map. So one side is the You Are Here city map and what's available throughout town. And then the other side will be an event billboard per se. And the plan is for one of those to be at the depot, and one here, and one at Centennial Park.
Okay.
So if we could have a discussion, if you haven't been in on that, it would be great.
I haven't been in on that. Olivia was gone before I started. Zoe was here a week and then left. So I've heard, I've heard of the Wayfinding signs. Was there talk of a financial contribution by the chamber?
Yes.
Okay.
Good to know.
Well, good to know. Budgets haven't been approved yet by three weeks, so...
So I guess on our next meeting, we should invite him or make up some other time to...
Yeah, who would, who's in on that discussion?
It's been through Public Works in our next meeting, so 31st of October, sorry. We're into December, aren't we?
Yep.
Take a look at your emails, Josh.
Okay.
I included you on an email.
I saw the last one, yep.
Yep.
Yep. Other questions? All right.
You had mentioned, you know, there's a number of groups that are working on the banners. Have you had a conversation at all with Karen Meston?
Yes.
Okay. I think their, her group is close to purchasing if they haven't already purchased banners, so they'll know the size and the diameter, you know, the poles and everything, so she would be a good first place to start.
Right. Yep.
Okay.
And, you know, I mean, if we've got banners for the whole year, I don't need to spend the five grand. I can spend it somewhere else, too, so I, you know, it's just in there because we've got to have something on those banners, so...
Yeah, and I think her group is probably focused on Christmas.
Yeah. Yeah, that was that November through March. Yeah, they're looking at like five months when I talked to her.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Anyone else?
Great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Josh.
Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you.
Tracy will give his report at the next council meeting, December 16th. He's traveling right now. So the next council update will be from the library director, Mary.
Hello, everyone.
Good evening.
So currently, we're averaging just over 2,000 people a month coming into the library to use our internet, check out our books, even to sit and read in front of the nice big windows, especially with the snow that came in. It was kind of a nice little use of them. We have almost 4,000 patrons currently in our database. Over half of those are from Hot Springs itself. We have some kind of filter out around the county, and then some far-reaching ones. We have a couple people out of state that just always have to have their card with us, even if they live states away, but we let them do it because they use our Libby's, so they're reading electronic books and audio books. Our winter session for Public Library Institute that Heather and I are participating in is starting this month, so once a month, we have Zoom meetings, and we have a bunch of homework that we have to do so that we can get our accreditation for the library. In November, our biggest event was we had the Storytime South Dakota, which was participated by libraries across the state. And what we did is we had Mayor Buff come in, and he read to our kids, and they had a blast learning about a cat talking about a dog. It's a confusing book, but it was cute, and the kids liked it, so... We still have our storytimes going on every Thursday. This month, because it's December, we won't have one today after Christmas, but we are adding two events on Fridays. So on December 13th, they're decorating Grimcracker houses, and anyone can come and do it. It's 11:00 to 2:00 at the library. We'll have the houses already preset, because we've got some toddlers that will be able to do it together, but decorate them, and we have lots of things to put on them. And then December 20th, Heather wants to do a Christmas movie, so anyone can come and watch the movie. It's from 6:00 to 8:00 in the evening at the library in front of the big fireplace. So it'll be a nice little cozy movie that the kids can watch and adults can enjoy as well. That's pretty much it right now. Good news for me with dates. Thank you.
Mary, I had a question. Is the library participating in the receipts for education? Or someone told me that they could take like the Lind's Dakota Mart receipts to the library?
We take the Dakota Mart, either the gas station or the grocery store receipts.
Okay.
The friends of the library collect them. They tally them.
Okay.
And for X amount of receipts that they turn in, they get funds into their accounts that they will then buy books for us here at the library.
Oh, okay. All right.
The similar to the education one, but...
Dakota Mart or Dakota Mart Gas?
Yes.
Okay.
And do you know where they, they just bring them up there, and you know where to...
We have a jar on our front counter where we collect them.
Okay, thank you.
Friends of the library come and...
Anyone else? You had mentioned averaging 2,000 people per month. Is that kind of normal for this time of the year, or up, up you down?
In October, it was 2,493. November was only 1727, so it kind of shifted a little bit there.
Okay.
I think a lot of that was just weather coming in and the holidays weren't coming into the...
Uh-huh. Do you know what the movie's going to be on December 20th?
It's one of the Grinch movies, one of the two last Grinch movies. She told me, but I completely forgot which one it was.
All right.
But we'll have it posted on Facebook at the library, so they can sign up.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. All right. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion to go into executive session in accordance with South Dakota codified law 1-25-21 personnel.
Second. Discussion. For the public, not sure how long this will take. I don't expect it to be terribly long. We'll rejoin you when we're done.
What time do you have?
Showing us back at 8:09. Can I get a motion to approve personnel actions A through I?
Make a motion to approve personnel actions, items A through I.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Welcome to the party. We could say welcome to the rat race in the funny farm.
We'll see you in the morning. Onto our ordinance. Can I get a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 1261?
Make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 1261, the supplemental appropriation ordinance. Second.
Ms. T, would you call the roll?
Yes. Linda Varvel.
Yes.
JR Haddleston.
Yes.
Travis Orbach.
Yes.
Gary Telkamp.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. Can I get a motion for resolution 2024-21, amend the citywide fee resolution or schedule?
I make a motion to approve 2024-21, amend the citywide fee schedule.
Second. Discussion.
I'd like to make a comment or a request. I don't know if this can happen, but it seems to me like other things we have with charging, charges and fees, if we couldn't somehow adopt a gradual annual increase rather than some of the big jumps that we are doing on this schedule, fee schedule, because some of them seem quite large, and it's my understanding it's because they haven't been changed for so long. So it would be such sticker shock if we could make it more gradual and consistent going forward.
More like cost of living. More like a cost of living increase for those.
Right.
Yeah.
2.5.
Just stay up with the times.
Or cost of living, whichever is higher, whatever. Something to that effect, instead of the 500% I saw on one thing. So...
Where'd you see a 500% increase?
Oh, there was, one went from 50 to 500 somewhere here.
Of course, there's some, too, that are not going to go up at all, but...
You know, and I know.
Yeah, it's true.
Cost of running equipment and whatnot has drastically increased, so...
I would like to see us review them more often for increases. I think picking a percent or standard might be hard, but I do think that annual increases like we've done with our water and wastewater and like the golf course does every year is more appropriate, but there are some that didn't get raised again this year either, so... And we got feedback from all the committees and department heads for each of these, so there are some still recommending they don't want to see any increases, and you don't see those on here, so...
So on some of those recommendations, are we like losing money if we continue to, like for example, the, whether it sticks out to me, I would like to take my kids to the park when they're younger, right? We would rent a space for a birthday party, and that's going from 25 to 50. I think that's a little inhibitive, but I just wondered if, so if nobody goes to the park, we don't expend any effort or any work, and it doesn't cost us anything, right? But if we rent out a space at the park, are we losing money by only accepting $25 for an application?
Yeah, I would disagree that the parks don't cost anything if you're not renting it, so I'm not sure I could agree with that, because the parks cost money, and we are, parks are never intended to make money either. This isn't a fee to try to make enough money to support our parks. It would be much, much higher if that were the case.
Right, but if someone doesn't choose to go to the park and rent it versus somebody who does, where do we lose money when they rent the space at the park?
Well, if there's going to be an event, then we have people that are making sure that there's adequate seating available for the event, that it's set up correctly for the event, that any garbage that's produced by the event, that there's toilet paper in the restrooms that support the event.
So that can happen with, just with an application? We do that?
If you reserve the park for an event, yes.
Oh, so it's a whole park reservation? It's not just a space? It's a whole park reservation?
Yeah, you can go to the park and have a birthday party without reserving it or paying the city any money. If you wanted to reserve a shelter at a park for a specific event, then...
I'd take exception with the statement that the committee has decided things, because at the airport, the committee did not decide. The airport committee was told what it was going to be.
I believe the department head is here to speak on that, airport manager, if you'd like, because I did say committees and department heads are the ones who provided this information.
Yeah, there's, there's any number of things that I take exception with here, but, you know, I understand that we're voting on this in its entirety, and I'm not going to throw the baby out with the bathwater, so I want you to know that. I just want you to also know that I do take exception, and everybody always knows that, so most of you know the reason.
The one that I take exception to is the cultivation and manufacturing that was put Since there isn't any regulation on the cultivation or any way like that, removing that item from here and go ahead and voting on the rest of it would be my ideal, because we really need to take a better look at it. Excuse me?
You did all agree to support it at a meeting. You're right, we don't have the ordinance yet, but you did agree to support...
We had the council meeting, but I didn't agree to it. I spoke to you verbally, and I have talked to the mayor verbally about it. But that's just how, my thoughts.
Yep. Well, the motion could certainly be amended, but I would caution you that if one council member wants to remove this particular item... if one council member wants to remove this particular item, then I think that is going to start down the road of, well, then another council member's going to want to remove this particular item and this particular item and this particular item, and then you're talking about numerous amendments to address specific ones. And if that's the case we're at, I think it would be better to...
Table till further discussion.
I want to make sure I say this correctly, because tabling it means it has to be brought back off the table, but to defer it to a vote at the next council meeting. But what we've been talking about is that a number of these items have not been changed for a number of years, and it was an attempt to get the fees more in line with what it costs the city to provide these services. To Travis's point about renting a park or a shelter, we certainly have our parks folks that go through and clean up the park or empty the trash cans a couple times a week. But if there's a large event there that requires extra work from the city staff, those are extra hours that the city staff's going to have to put in to take care of that. And does $20 cover the cost of it, of the man-hours? So we can go down that road, but I really think it's... I would ask you to approve this fee schedule, recognizing what Deborah and Gary are talking about, is that we need to look at these fees each year more closely. But there are going to be situations where I suspect that it is voting all or nothing, because we may not have a situation where everybody agrees with every one of the fees.
No, there's... We're not going to agree with everything that's on here, but we also have to look at our department heads, and they went through and looked at all of this. We've been asking for this, asking for us to have a look at it, and now we get down to the point that here's what is going forward that department heads and most of us are in agreement of, and we should honor that. I mean, we give them that opportunity to say yes, no, otherwise. Who am I to tell that department head that this is what he or she feels this ought to be for this particular item? And just because I don't want... I don't agree with it, but it's... They've looked at it. They know what we're doing. They know what this list is. So we have to honor those guys as well.
To Gary's point, as far as the committee, a particular committee may not agree with the rates that are here. The golf course committee didn't agree with all of the rate increases, but as a council, we have to be careful when we have committees that are staffed with users of that particular service, and they're advocating to not raise a rate. How the public will perceive that, that... I'll pick on the golf course. The department heads are advocating for increases in fees to support that particular service, but the users, the ones that are going to be paying those fees, say, "Well, I don't want my rate going up." So as the users of that committee, they're saying, "Well, I don't want the rates to go up," when the department head themselves is advocating for a necessary increase in the rates. So Gary is correct that not always do the committee members agree in the rate changes, but we have department heads for a reason, and I'm always going to defer to what they feel is the best thing to do for their departments, recognizing that some of the committee members may not be happy about that.
And I just want to add something else as far as pulling... You know, we talked about cultivation, and we indicated that as a council, we were willing to add cultivation to the ordinance. So to pull that out, that fee out now before we've modified the ordinance, that will then, once it's assumed, given what the pulse of the council was that night, that that ordinance revision will likely pass. So if we don't put that in this fee schedule, we will have to amend the fee schedule, which will then have to be published in the paper again, and that is another cost to the city. So we need to be good stewards. Misty, I'm sorry, I will depersonalize this. The finance office has asked the committees and the department heads for quite some time now to look at these fees. We have been given a reasonable amount of time to look at the fees. This, I don't believe, is the right time to say, "I don't like the fees." That's a discussion for two weeks ago. So yes, not comfortable with some of them. Our committee, for public safety, we didn't think some of the fees should have been changed. They were changed. However, we also found out that we made, I'm going to go ahead and call it, an ignorant recommendation, not realizing that what we said should stay the same, the cost has actually gone up for the materials associated with those fees. So back to the department heads and the employees that are actually administering these fees had better knowledge than we as a committee. We didn't take the time to do it properly, so the department heads did. So what's before us is not pretty. To Deb and Gary's point, yes, we need to look at these, and we need to look at them with a... We need to look at them properly each year. So I think we would do the city a disservice if we don't approve this resolution as is tonight.
And I agree with everything Bill's saying, and I think that this has been a learning process for all of us. Certainly has been for me, and I'm thinking that we should have maybe, if we had issues, we should have raised it several weeks ago, and shame on me for that. And also, I might just say that the airport committee people did reach out to me here in the last day or so, and they're all fine with what's being proposed as far as the increases on the fees at the airport. So there's no... Those issues, there are no issues. It was just discussion. They had concerns at that time. So that's water on the bridge, and... But yeah, I think... JR shaking his head, yes. I think... I feel like I've learned a lot. I think maybe we all have learned. I agree with you.
So this next time around, when we look at the fees again, what are we going to base our decisions on? Or what are the department heads basing their decisions on for the next year, a year from now?
I would say if you're going to have issues with this or any of these fees, and it's time for us to redo them again, then we had better be at our... With our department heads, and we'd better be talking awful darn hard with them. We're relying on these people to tell us, "Yes, this is what we can live with. No, we can't," and some are not on here, as what Misty had said. So this isn't everything, but if you've got a problem with this, it's not the night that you're going to vote on it to raise your issue. You need to do that long before, when you're asked to by our finance office, to go out and meet with these department heads and figure out, is this the right amount, or what would you rather it be?
As far as timing goes, too, I would remind you that this discussion started during budget time for 2025, so that's a great time for us to start thinking about it and talking about it, which is August, September for the next year. If we did postpone this, we'd run out of time to have it be effective unless you voted on it as an emergency, because you do have to publish these and give time for referral before they're supposed to become effective. So you do need a good month after you present them before they become effective. So I would say, as far as timing goes, just like you did this year, when you were doing your 2025 budget planning, it's a great time to start talking about and looking at fees for the prior... For the next year.
And there are some things on here that I don't agree with, but I am talking with some of the department heads. I'm fine. I mean, I'm ready to go forward. May not be what I want to see go through or not go through, but they're good with it. I'm good with it. It's fine.
Anyone else?
So this next year, when they reassess the fees, what are they basing it on again? Like, are they keeping costs or keeping track of costs throughout the year in order to make an informed decision on what the fees need to be?
Each committee and department head used different methodology for their recommendations. Like your water, wastewater, and garbage fees are written into the contract in the ordinance, so there wasn't anybody sitting down saying, "We've already discussed these fees, and they change every year during the term."
Those went up like a few pennies, I think.
I'm sorry?
As I said, I think those ones went up like, what, a few cents?
2.5% was the amount that was set in ordinance for water and wastewater. 3.5% is the amount that's written into our contract for garbage services. Like I mentioned, some faculties didn't look at their rates or raise them at all. Some realize that it's been a long time since they've done anything. The golf course does it every year. They're really one of the only functions of city government besides our utilities that have an increase every year. So the methodology is different for each.
Anyone else?
Yes. I'm not against any of this, okay? What I am pointing out, this initial medical cannabis dispensary cultivation and manufacturing is something new because of what came down through legislation and what was being voted on. That's the only thing that I'm looking at. There's no regulatory commission on this to the strength or anything of that period. We don't know what you're going to get if you go to a dispensary. If you buy this, buy that, is that going to be stronger? Is this going to be stronger? There's nothing even across the board. I think as a council, we should do our due diligence and find out first before we vote on something to that effect. Everything else I'm okay with. I believe in what everybody's saying at this table as far as that part of it. This is something new that has just recently come out. I'm not here to lobby you. I'm not here to sway your way of thinking. I'm here to let you know how I feel about this. Now, one second, Councilman Lukens. I feel like if I vote on this, I have strong convictions about this, but that's me. We can go ahead and go forward with this thing. I've got no problems with the fees as they are, as they are. They need to be looked at every year, like you're saying, and they need to be handled every year.
I just want to say that, you know, if we set a fee for cultivation, manufacturing, and testing, that's all we're doing tonight is setting a fee. The ordinance has to allow that, and the ordinance will reference the state law. So... And it's the state that sets the regulations for all of what Larry's concerned about. So alls we're doing tonight is setting a fee for the license if the ordinance is changed to allow it.
I'm well aware of that. I understand. Yes, sir. We did talk earlier, and yes, sir, I'm very well aware of that.
Anyone else? Misty, would you call the roll, please?
Gary Tellkamp.
Yes.
Linda Varvel.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
JR Huddleston.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Travis Orbach.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. Onto new business. Can I get a motion to approve new business item A, approve and authorize the mayor to sign change order number four on a high-country erectors construction contract?
I make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign change order number four on the high-country erectors construction contract for the multi-aircraft hangar building and its site development. This change order includes revisions to the final installed quantities used on the project as well as the liquidated damages. The total change order amount is a reduction in the contract price of $244,647.50. Total contract amount after changes order is $472,593.50 for AIP number 3-46-0022-015-2021.
Second. Larry. Discussion. Just want to point out in this one, we've talked about this particular contract a number of times and the possibility of liquidated damages, and now it's final what the liquidated damages are. But this money is not coming back to the city. The project itself was 100% funded by FAA, so FAA is going to get all of the liquidated damages. None of that money will come back to the city. Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion for new business item B, to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the final review and acceptance document related to the high-country erectors?
I make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the final review and acceptance document related to the high-country erectors construction contract for the multi-aircraft hangar building and site development.
Second.
Deborah. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion for new business item C, approve and accept an offer of $551 from Brad Humbrecht?
I make a motion to approve and accept offer of $551 from Brad Humbrock for the 2024 Southern Hills Golf Course pine firewood pile. One other bid of $525 was received from Harold Green.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion for new business item D, accept service proposal and approve agreement for services in 2025 with TruGreen?
Make a motion to accept the service proposal and approve agreement for the service in 2025 with TruGreen for a total of $21,419.37. Breakdown is parks, including the Freedom Trail for $13,717.21. Evergreen Cemetery, $4,761. Mueller Center, $1,388.72. And wastewater treatment plant for $1,552.44.
Second. Discussion.
Yeah, I've got a question for Misty. On the Freedom Trail, does this include poison ivy? Where it shows... Where it shows Freedom Trail, it has no explanation of what they do on it.
I don't think they specifically spray for poison ivy.
Broadleaf, right.
Is that... Because they do say, and I'm sorry, I'm not a specialist in what services they offer, but they do say broadleaf weed. So if poison ivy is a broadleaf weed, then I would assume yes.
Okay, thank you.
How do we know what they're spraying when they spray? Do they put up signs, like warning signs?
They do after, usually.
So I mean, like, for example, do they use a roundup?
They're not...
You know, and how do they spray along the river?
Not sure the brand of the product they use, but when they're done, like at my house, they'll put a sign up that says TruGreen, so that you wouldn't know that they've been through and sprayed the yard.
Yeah, they've... I've seen them out here in front of the Mueller Center.
Right, I see little signs. It doesn't tell you anything. It just tells you they've been there.
Right, right.
But we don't know what they've sprayed.
I think we've had discussions with them in past years about utilizing proper chemicals around the river.
Are they certified in that?
And these are great questions to ask when you see this on an agenda, so that I can get you the answers to those questions. If this is something you want to know... I can get you the answers to those questions. If this is something you want to know, I'd be happy to reach out to the person that we dealt with for this and ask these specific questions, but he's not here and I'm not an expert in it, so.
Right. I mean, my, my kids go to the park and they see a little TruGreen sign. I mean, what the heck can they spray, you know?
Yeah, I'm not even sure.
I mean, I looked at the contract. It doesn't say anything in the terms. It doesn't say
If you're interested in knowing that, I'd be happy to get that answer for you.
And I want to say, in your defense, Misty, I did, we talked about this that one day. You got the information together. I do appreciate it. It's just that I saw the Freedom Trails. That's why I was asking that. Thank you.
Travis, I'll find an answer for you.
I'm just thinking, it'd be interesting to see a disclosure on what they're using, where, you know, this, I don't know.
I know with my contract, the delivery receipt usually tells me what they have done that day to the yard and what chemicals they put in, like if they were spraying my trees or whatever.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Going to get a motion for new business, item E, a plat of Hall's Track North and Hall's Track South of Block 22.
I make a motion to approve a plat of Hall's Track North and Hall's Track South of Block 22, Fargo and Prentice's addition to Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota, formerly lots 10 through 15.
Second. Discussion.
This was approved through planning and zoning.
What's it, what's it for?
Essentially, this used to be a combined parcels, same family, and now that it's being sold, they're separating the two lots, and they're getting rid of the interior lot lines so, because people build over top of those lot lines, which isn't supposed to be, supposed to happen. So, these are conforming lots with the amount of square footage allowed in our ordinances.
And if this doesn't pertain to what we're talking about, please stop me. But across in the picture also, you see where it says Lot 38, 37, 36, 35, and to 31. That's Butler Park. Does, are those lot, lot parcels also?
Yeah, they just haven't ever been gotten rid of. We have that all over town.
Okay. I just didn't know, because I thought it was a park, so.
Yeah.
All right. That was probably irrelevant, but thank you.
I think normally a standard building lot is, is 50 feet wide, and these are only each 25 feet wide.
Correct.
Right, okay.
So, the standard for a house on a lot is 6,000 square feet, and these are a .24 acre and a .22 acre, which is more than adequate. Essentially, I believe it was two brothers that lived in the houses, and now they're just dividing so that one can be sold off properly.
Okay.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And our last new business, item F, going to get a motion to approve a travel attorney request from Finance Officer Misty Sommers-Walton.
Make a motion to approve a travel attorney request from Finance Officer Misty Sommers-Walton to attend the SCML Board Meeting and Joint Meeting with the counties in Pierce, South Dakota on 12/11 and 12/12/24.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Under Committee Reports, first one, Administrative and Finance, JR?
Admin Finance will next meet on December 9th at 1:00 PM here in the Mueller Civic Center. All are welcome.
Thank you. Airport Advisory, Gary?
The Airport Advisory Committee will meet this coming Thursday, December 5th, 24, at 8:30 AM at the airport.
Thank you. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Travis?
The Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District Board will next meet January 9th, Thursday, 7 o'clock here at the Mueller Center, 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Historic Preservation, Deborah?
Historic Preservation meets this Wednesday, December 4th, 5:00 PM here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Evans Plunge Advisory, Linda?
The Evans Plunge Advisory Committee will meet on December 12th at noon at the Evans Plunge. All are welcome.
Thank you. Parks Recreation, Larry, Linda?
Parks Recreation, Beautification and Cultural Development will meet this Wednesday, the 4th, here at the Mueller Center at 2:00 PM. Everyone is invited.
Thank you. Planning and Zoning, Deborah?
Planning and Zoning met November 20th at City Hall. 6:00 PM, present were Donald Sted, Christine Heidebrink, Wayne Higman, James Forbord, staff, myself, and Scott Sogi. Guests present were Jason Gutch, Gary Tellkamp, and Frank Burkolt. Under new business number one, Burkolt requests to vacate. Frank Burkolt was present with a preliminary plat to explain his request to vacate a portion of Galveston Avenue adjoining his property. A motion was made by James to recommend approval of this request to vacate a portion of the Galveston Avenue adjacent to Lot 1, Block 9, Trimmer's addition to Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota. Wayne seconded, and it was carried. So, this is just next door here to the Mueller Center, Mr. Burkolt's property there over by the dump station. And so, he's asking to vacate, you know, that, when you drive into the parking lot, that's essentially Galveston Avenue. And he'd like the property up to the curb so that he can maintain and build or plant a barrier of bushes to block the view of the dump station from his home. So, that's where that's heading. The Gutch Lot Line Revision, James Gutch was present with a site plan for the home. He will be building in a proposed plat with revised lot lines, creating three conforming lots. James made the motion to recommend approval upon the condition that all utility ordinances are satisfied, and it was seconded and carried. This is that triangular piece of property that is on South Garden Street, on the S, right at the S curve there. He wants to put that into three lots, and that makes it a small subdivision, and the ordinances require that utilities be stubbed out to each parcel. So, that's what this stipulation here is, is that he can, he wants to build his house on the center of the three parcels, and he can do that with it as it is now. But if he wants to sell off lots on either side of him, he needs to do the ordinance, make the ordinance, satisfy utility ordinances before that plat can be documented. Is that the word I'm looking for? So, that's where that stands at the moment, and that's not come before us yet. HBSH Homes by Shadrack Howie Tiny Home Review. Members discussed a request for the placement of a tiny home in residential A zoning following the ordinances. This was for information only. No action was taken. And I think as it stands now with our ordinances, as long as they're put on a real foundation and they conform with all the setbacks and whatnot, tiny homes are not restricted. Number four, the Hall's Track North and Hall's Track South. Donald Sted made a motion to recommend the approval to eliminate and revise the lot lines between the Hall's Tracks North and South, and we did that tonight. Donna and Amy Baker, use of area in residential A, HS Industrial Park. This item, oh, that was removed. Never mind. And then Dakota Kind Cannabis Ordinance Revision. Members were provided with a notice of public hearing on ordinance number 1262. The hearing will take place on December 18th during the regularly scheduled P and Z meeting and would revise the current ordinance to allow for cultivation and manufacturing of cannabis as opposed to dispensary only. And the old business were all deferred for the night. They adjourned at 6:00 PM or 7:25 PM, and we will meet again December 18th, 6:00 PM at City Hall.
Any questions for Deborah?
Yeah, that bush wall he wants to put up, is that going to affect the station? Will the roots affect the station, the water station?
No.
Okay. Just a thought.
Anyone else? Thank you, Deborah. Public Safety, Bill, JR?
Public Safety will meet this Thursday, December 6th, 1:00 PM at the Mueller Center Conference Room.
Thank you. Public Works, Bill?
Okay. Public Works met Tuesday, November 26th at 1:00 PM here at the Mueller Center. Present were myself, Deborah, Gary, Mayor Nelson, and Wastewater Foreman Jason Carell. Members of the public were Rachel Witcher and Craig Romi. Under communications from the public, Rachel Witcher presented her vision to install a 25 by 40-foot garrison flag on the grounds of the Pioneer Museum. Since this is in the historic district, the project will need to go before the Historic Preservation Commission. Councilwoman Johnston provided details for next steps to go before the Historic Preservation Commission. As this is on county property, the Public Works Committee has, has no issues with the project and appreciates Rachel's efforts to, to go forward with this project. Craig Romi expressed a concern over placement of the northernmost suspended sidewalk tower in the beginning of the regular sidewalk to the north. The mayor informed him that this is an existing punch list item and is being addressed by the contractor. Councilwoman Johnston was requested by the Leeds Group to install a trash can at the northwest corner of Chicago and University, and that'll be forwarded on to the Streets Department. Under old business, the Streets Superintendent still has not been contacted regarding a quote to crush the waste concrete at the city shop. Since this is an unbudgeted project, the issue is being dropped. Under new business, the dip bridge boring RFP, the bid opening was at 1:15 PM. Jim Shamber with Mainline Contractors provided the only bid for the project. The cost of boring just the sixth street bridge exceeds the council's 2025 budgeted amount by about $25,000. It was, I didn't write down the amounts. I think the bid was either $75,000 or $79,000 for the boring only, with an additional $20-some thousand if we decided to put liners in the culverts. However, if the bid meets the, has all the required components, the committee recommends accepting the bid and that council include the additional amount in a 2025 supplemental appropriation. If awarded, the contractor indicated the work could begin around August and would take about one week to accomplish. Given the added cost of the lining the culverts, the committee recommended doing the boring only. The, just having the concrete culverts has lasted about 70 years, so we think we can go ahead and avoid the liners. The historic stairway engineering estimates were reviewed. The estimated cost and priorities and approximate city share, assuming an 80% grant, could be acquired is as follows. The number one priority, we believe, should be the stairway at the Episcopal Church. The estimated cost of that stairway is $211,512. Assuming an 80% grant, city share would be about $42,500. Number two priority would be the fire station stairs at a cost of $139,339, with the city portion being about $28,000. Third priority would be the steps to the museum, $610,217. City portion would be about $122,000. Item three, Valley View engineering estimates were reviewed. The engineering and construction oversight only costs ranged from $65,000 to $89,000 for a project that would include curbs, gutters, paving, and surface water management. As this would be a very costly project covered by an assessment district that includes only a few property owners and has other complicating factors such as non-city properties above the Valley View subdivision, subdivision that impacts Valley View, this issue will continue to be studied before a recommendation is put forth. Item number four, the wayfinding cost proposal submitted by ISG was reviewed. Clarification questions regarding the number and types of signs were sent back to ISG as a result of the committee's review. Under departmental summaries, the only input we had was from wastewater. At the request of the wastewater foreman, a revision to the wastewater ordinance that would prohibit receiving septic tank material was put on hold to assess the economic impact on the department. Finance had provided an updated amount of revenue that would be lost if the ordinance change was implemented. After a discussion on the increased maintenance cost associated with routine replacement at shorter intervals of components, added maintenance and downtime of single critical pieces of equipment such as the sludge pump and the increased volume of chemicals such as enzymes to help eliminate odor, which are increased by the introduction of the septic tank fluids, the committee supports the foreman's request to go forward with the ordinance revisions and recommends a July 1, 2025 implementation, implementation date to allow for necessary administrative changes and notifications. It should be noted that accepting septic tank fluids provides a benefit primarily to non-city residents while putting an added burden on a critical piece of city infrastructure. And another item from the foreman, he reported that he's continuing to review applicants in hopes of filling the open position. In other business or other information, the active and inactive project information has been updated and can be found on the Public Works Report on the city website. We adjourned about 3:00 PM, and our next meeting will be Tuesday, December 31st at 1:00 PM here at the Mueller Center Conference Room.
Any questions for Bill?
Yeah, Bill, I got one. Will the boring, will it, can it compromise the bridge's structural integrity?
No, it's, it'll just be the limestone that's inside the concrete culverts.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, Bill. No report from the Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory. The course is closed. Finance Officer Report, Misty?
Thank you, Mayor. Standard reports are in your monthly finance officer report. I feel like I've been saying for months that we know what all the red is for, but it still can be shocking, as you see it in several of our funds. The fund summary, budget to actual, I'm not able to input into the accounting software, the supplemental appropriation ordinance that had its second reading tonight till later in December, so you'll continue to see those departments and funds that are over budget, but we addressed most of those, hopefully all of them. but we addressed most of those, hopefully all of them, in the ordinance that had its second reading tonight. Cash balances remain strong in the funds. Specifically, I would point you to the water and wastewater, which we've been watching as we come to the end of this project, and they're both in a positive position, so that's good. And then on your investment reports, I would just point out that the next CD we have maturing will be our Water Debt Service Reserve Fund CD, and that's going to be January 31st of 2025. So as I typically do, I'll show you some comparisons and choose what makes the most sense for the city for those funds that we can't utilize as long as we have the debt outstanding. To give you an update on the unclaimed property reporting that I submitted and reported to you last month, one, one of the four checks that we remitted, it was issued early February 2022, and it was processed and cleared from our bank account four days after I sent it to unclaimed property. So I got to experience something I have not done before and ask for that money back from the state since it cleared our account, and it got all done in the same month, so that makes me happy when it comes to bank reconciliations. And I also identified four other items that were unclaimed for the city. So in that process, I was able to find $208.88 from four different entities that had reported unclaimed property that they had that were cities. So was able to get that, and I did receive that check from them today after submitting the claimant report. Thank you for approving the citywide fee resolution. We've been consolidating the feedback into that resolution, and I heard you, we'll talk more about smaller annual increases during budget time and a little bit earlier in the year. I did identify a few ordinance revisions that are necessary, such as updating the term for chicken licenses and removing specific fee amounts. As a reminder, and maybe new information to those that are new, during our major codification project, we agreed to eliminate fixed fee amounts in favor of language that states in an amount set by council and subject to change from time to time. So that makes it a lot easier to make these changes without having to revise ordinances. And so we'll do some work in the coming months to update those ordinances where we identified some still exist. Since September, I've been working on a review of the temporary sign ordinance. I give you some updates on the committee that discussed some of those revisions. At this time, I'm still waiting on some feedback from Bruce Schroder at the Department of Transportation to confirm that we have the authority to enforce some of the restrictions we talked about in the bump outs. We have an agreement with the state for maintenance and encroachments, so we need to ensure that we're not, we're not running afoul of our obligation to the state in the restrictions that we'd like to place on the sidewalks and the bump outs, because they are all in the state right of way. So there were some other discussions in our committee about maybe some other changes, but these that we focused on were just temporary sign, sign rules. So I did summarize in my memo to you what we discussed. The subcommittee talked about sponsors or businesses not being allowed to advertise on temporary signs on public property. One of the pedestrian bridges on both sides may be used to advertise events provided a valid park permit has been issued. No signage will be allowed on the Jennings or Minnacotta Bridges. Signs may be displayed no more than five days before an event and must be removed within two days after. No signs will be allowed on sidewalk railings, towers, or bump outs, except for the Key Pot Springs Beautiful signs. And then, again, I'm awaiting some clarification from Bruce at the state to confirm that we have the authority to enforce these restrictions. During the second meeting in December, council typically approves the annual subsidy transfers from our 212 additional sales tax fund to both the golf course and the plunge. To fulfill the requirements of a balanced 2024 budget, council projected both funds would require additional means of finance or transfer in. The estimated amounts were $157,915 for the golf course and $235,515 for the plunge. At year-end, only amounts needed to cover actual expenses and to ensure a positive cash balance is transferred. And as of today, both funds appear to be on track to not need their budgeted subsidies. I'd like to congratulate and thank both the Evans Plunge and Golf Course Management teams on this accomplishment. It takes a whole year to get here and a lot of work, so congratulations to them. Might talk a little bit about what year-end looks like for the city and what you can expect as approvers for the next couple months. We do utilize a modified accrual basis of accounting. We have six governmental funds, and then we utilize full accrual for our enterprise funds, and we have five of those. Do you have any questions about any of that detail? I'm not going to read it all off to you, but please don't hesitate to ask. And remember that when I provide you with the December month-end reports, that those are not year-end financials or reports. My travel training request, which you approved at the last meeting, has been rescheduled for Thursday, January 30th. I mentioned when you were approving it that the date might be flexible, and there were some, there were some issues with some other trainings on that day, so it will still be held in new underwear, in new underwood. That was a slip. And I still plan on attending that meeting in hope for good travel weather. And then, thank you for your approval tonight of the, my attendance at the SDML December Board Meeting. This will be the first one where I'll be serving as a district chair representative, so I'm interested to see what that looks like and what we do. City offices will be closed Monday, the 23rd of December, through Wednesday, the 25th in celebration of the Christmas holiday. And I wish you all a joyful Christmas and a prosperous New Year, and I'm looking forward to all that we'll achieve in 2025 and collaborating to accomplish these great things together. Thank you.
Still trying to understand the need to wear new underwear, new underwear and new underwood.
You're new.
I didn't mean to say anything.
Any questions for Misty? Thank you, Misty.
One question, Misty. I'm assuming since the lighting and the other $47,000 bill were in the claims tonight, those weren't in the revenue and expense?
No, not yet. They'll be posted after your approval, so.
Oh, okay.
You were hoping, huh?
I was hoping.
That was a big bill.
Couple of updates for you tonight. Last council meeting, you were asked by Fall River Health Systems to allow Tracy some time to take a look at the bid package request. And we met with Fall River Health, I believe that same week, and it became very apparent that they're not anywhere near ready for a bid package. There still needs to be the project designed, and the bid package would come after that. So there isn't any time that Tracy is going to need, you know, at this point to help them out. They fully recognize that the design and the bid package preparation is something that would come from their side. And then the, it was, talked a little bit about when we were going through the fee, fee schedule for tonight, about different pricing and committees, whether they're recommending them or not. At the last mayor report, I talked about updating the process for approving airport fuel pricing. And now that we have a new city administrator, I'm going to schedule a meeting with Finance Officer, City Administrator, Ivan and myself, to walk through that process that I talked about putting in front of you, so that you'll approve a process for airport fuel pricing, and you won't approve every fuel price change. And as part of that process, we'll tell you how we're going to do it and how we'll notify you when those happen, and that's what we'll be asking you to approve. So that's something I'd like to have in front of you for the next council meeting, so that's what I'm going to be working on. That's what I have for you tonight. Any questions? All right. With that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.